Welcome to the Selecting Meetings, the Town of Acton, May 23, 2019. First item is still applying.
I do wish to apply to the United States of America to the Republic of which statements on one nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Move the second in. On paper, approve. This is the last meeting.
Yeah, who knows? Make the motion to approve the minutes of, I think it's April 9th to 16th.
And move the second in to approve the minutes of April 9th and 16th. Enter the discussion. On paper, on paper. Time and heads of committee chair updates. Do we have any that we should come over? Is there a time and head of committee chairs?
The, just for clarity, directed call offering to come about, they were on the actual schedule, but otherwise, it's just our way. But because they were here this last week, they're going to go up there.
Okay, we'll go to old business. EMA Director, nine one one, or your job description?
So the EMA Director has been advertised, being advertised in the speech, so that is out there. Co-Enforcement has been, had his staff do quite a bit of research on the E911. He's got some thoughts with it, but wants to speak to the board, so in the process of scheduling workshop reporting regarding that, so be done sooner, we'll go along.
And then your email is that you have another job description, so if you get a chance, just forward that over to us.
Okay.
Okay, road bridge.
I spoke to Road Commissioner Joe Laterno today. He did have a meeting on Monday with HEB in regards to the road bridge, so he met with two individuals and they'll have a report back and then we can go through it.
Seventh Street.
Seventh Street, I've been talking with Mark Cody, had another conversation with him since the last meeting. There are some areas of concern in there that we've kind of touched base on in the past. We do not have the engineering report. We're trying to get clarification as to whether or not it is completely required based on the way the ordinance is written, so we've got someone giving us an opinion on that. In addition, the 34 feet isn't in there with a few simple increments, so we had Burke and Clegg go back to Seventh Street attorneys and decide if that's something they're going to be able to do prior to getting it on the warrants, or if not, he may make an recommendation that not go on. And Mark is aware of that. Give it a little more time.
Okay, Road Commissioner and, uh, Road Commissioner and Road Committee ordinances.
They had the public hearing last night?
We did.
How'd it go?
It actually went excellent. Both paths went great. We had, first thing we did last night was had a meeting with the Road Committee and the Road Commissioners and ourselves, and went over every ounce of the ordinance ordinances, did some rewrites, some revamps, added, subtracted a few things. Then we had the public hearing, which went very well. It was good participation from a lot of people. Get some things that we need to, a few other little things to include in that.
I have.
Few changes?
Yeah. Well, suggestions.
Right, so if the board could just talk about them and kind of decide if you want them changed, so this is kind of where we're at. So we know that the nomination papers for all the municipal seats have come in law and we're ready to think about making ballots for that. But I tell you, you've got two final drafts, anything about absentee ballots. So if we can decide if the board wants the changes that you, that you got last night and go ahead and schedule a public hearing for a final draft, so we're really going to spend some money advertising getting this out there because the goal is not to have any changes after the last public hearing.
Right.
Be the finals off in it for the no cap, so what were the changes until law?
Um, just to...
Which 21?
I have the Road Committee ordinance out here. I'm just looking at the regulations, the sentence number two needs to be a little smoother. It's a little, um, blocking. Gavin had mentioned that in the comp plan, there was some duties listed that will put the Road Committee to perform.
Right, which is very expired, it's nothing in there. He did come in today and let me obviously show you. It's the fourth comp plan and it's on the town's website, and this is adopted by the people coming in and on, but everything in there should have, could have, would have been done many years ago. It needs to be updated, which I think the planning board is, is looking at.
We've actually done my part completely.
We have gone over, sorry, Joyce Backstreet, Planning Board Chair, we've gone over every one of the ordinances in the comp plan that we have anything to do with or is given to us. It's a very musical night here. And we've brought all things up to date, or if they were the same but need to be looked at again, say in five years, we've done that. And I think that was actually in our last report that we gave to the board.
Maybe we just haven't actually seen it, but I do have a meeting with Ken tomorrow, so we'll catch up on that. And I'm not sure if somebody's actually updating the comp plan, but that's something that would have to be voted on by the, by the voters anyways.
Well, that has, that has to, it, one department can't do that. We couldn't do that. We can't, we just put it into the, exactly, the whole thing and it has to be.
Right, yeah, that's definitely not going to be this year's vote.
Oh, no, not at all. There's a lot of work that has to be done. But it is the law that we have to, all our ordinances and everything have to agree with that.
Right.
Because as old as it is, it is what we have.
So if the Road Committee ordinance passes, the, the comp plan needs to reflect that.
Okay.
But I'll send you what he has and, from the comp plan.
And I think, I mean, there, I don't think there were any other changes besides for the sentence number two under regulations, but it was, um...
Have words that you wanted to say?
We needed smoother words. Smoother words.
The committee shall not communicate on behalf of the Town of Acton unless, as an advisory road committee with outside agencies without prior approval.
Too many, like commas and...
So you want it to, to say the same thing, you just, God, this commission, yeah. So, how about just the, "The committee shall not communicate on behalf of the Town of Acton, period."
Period.
The Road Committee may, with prior approval of this committee in advance, communicate with outside agencies," or something like that. Turn it into a couple of sentences.
As an advisory board.
As an advisory board. All right, I'll make those changes.
Yeah, yeah, throw in a period and make it, yeah, um, I think that was it. There was a comment that if it doesn't pass, what happens? There was another MMA from 1991 description on road committees. And I think that was it. And I'll, I'll mention it in the Road Commissioner one, because with the Road Committee, when this takes effect after the secret ballot, then a new Road Committee, according to this ordinance, will be reelected.
Correct.
At the Saturday town meeting.
Right.
And it was mentioned that, is that what's going to happen with the Road Commissioners? So...
Well, the Road Commissioners by default are on the committee.
No, but what happens if the Road Commissioner one passes? What happens to those two positions?
Nothing, I mean, there are, nothing. I mean, you're not, this, there's no prior ordinance that you're, or prior seats that you're looking to dissolve.
Okay, so that's what I said earlier.
So whoever gets elected Road Commissioner will be a Road Committee member.
Okay.
And Mr. Laterno is going to be regardless, because he is your, he's already appointed. I had a couple of people come in today about the Road Commissioner piece.
I have a couple things too.
Well, one of them actually didn't come from, that we started to talk about last night was the subcontractors. Know if you, I can't hear what they're talking.
Keep the talking in the audience for minimum, please.
It's an echo or something. The subcontractors, we talked about possibly putting something in there that if they, if they choose a subcontract, they still need to meet the regulations set forth by the town. You know, because you could have a subcontractor plow for you, but they still need to be, you know, drug tested, they need to have liability insurance. If you have the blurb in there about the employees, it only makes sense to do something if they choose to go through the subcontractor way.
Yeah, maybe same type of language except the word subcontractor.
And the other piece that I got, one of the former resident of Acton felt like there needed to be something in there that specified if the Road Commissioner leaves town, that they are to leave a contact with the town office.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's...
Yep, like vacation or whatnot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not bad.
And it should be in there that the Road Commissioners are members of the Road Committee and they, obviously if they're, they're members of the Road Committee, they're going to attend the meetings. So that's something that should be.
So under job responsibilities, you want to put, I mean, you want to add one that says something to the effect that, you know, they acts as a, you know, or serves as a sitting Road Committee member pursuant to the ordinance, or something like that? Remember, you also take the chance of one passing and one failing.
Right.
You can't, you know what I mean? So you don't want to put language in there that ties.
So's...
You know?
Oh, yeah, ties the two together.
So.
All right.
All right, let me think about those couple. And when do you want to have another public hearing?
I had more changes.
Oh, sorry.
Me too.
Under definitions for emergency, it was suggested to use imminent instead of immediately in danger, to use the word imminent.
And the board wants that change?
I'd be, either way, to me, it means almost the same thing.
Okay. Changing, yes?
So no changing? No, we were just, I was just passing along the suggestion. We hadn't decided on anything.
A minute's fine with me.
I can do a minute.
So change it, okay. Um, under responsibilities, the Road Commissioner will be in charge of every, so I guess it was mentioned that we shouldn't use the word roads because that might be assumed that private roads would be included, so keep it as just townways. And townways does cover town roads.
Okay. So striking the word roads?
What if we added downroads and townways? Is that, is that the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's what I had asked Dennis.
Okay.
I think it was Dennis.
Number...
I'm sorry, that, I'm guessing that road, words roads is in there a few times.
Yeah, so anywhere, anywhere you see roads, or I think there's highway in there a few times too, so to convert that.
Kind of a quick change.
Yeah, quick edits.
All right, so road becomes way and highway becomes way and bridges. Okay?
It was suggested to revisit the, the due date of budgeting.
Number seven.
Number seven, because typically in the spring, the roads are the worst and that's when you kind of might be thinking what you want to work on rather than... But I feel like it's not in the same, you're not dealing with the right correct fiscal year.
You wouldn't be dealing with the same fiscal year either.
Or budget timeline.
I mean, in hopes, the Road Commissioner is, is looking at that year round and, you know, they're making that inventory and working on, you know, I mean, that's, I think, if you're leaving it just for budgeting purposes, I mean, that's kind of, you know, your budgets are due in January, February.
Right.
So I don't know, you know?
Even if we change it to April, it's going to be beyond.
Right. So keep it November 1st. Let's see, a few things. It was suggested to try to address 13th Street because they travel over a private road to get to the townway.
Are you going to address that in the Road Commissioner ordinance?
I don't know how, that was Dennis. Maybe he could try to expand it again.
They're not plowing 13th Street, right? Or they're plowing it to get to that road?
Yeah, it's like, it's like I said last night, you know, I'm not against what we're doing. It's just that if everything's a townway, that the Road Commissioner is supposed to be doing, that somehow you need to address his access to a townway.
Is that the only road in town on both sides that we do that?
That's the only, that's the only private road that, that we're crossing.
All right, so I'll work on...
And that's, and that's just in the winter, of course.
Right.
As far as maintenance, we don't do any summer maintenance on that road at all. You know, that was, that was my whole thing about it.
All right, let me work on some wording for that.
It was also suggested to add as a job duty that they would put, they would put together a long-term plan with the committee and Board of Selectmen, a three and five-year plan.
We had that in there somewhere.
Well, it just said, "Plan ahead," or something, it was, um...
Just want to tighten that up a little bit.
Which number are you on?
So five talks about planning ahead, discussing repairs and maintenance, but it doesn't really talk about a timeline.
Yeah, and Langley, Mr. Langley had mentioned that last night, so the, yeah, I mean, it doesn't tie them to anything, so, I mean, it just doesn't force the town to do those projects, but it, you know.
Just to...
But we would like a...
Just to have a, have a plan.
Yeah, a three and a five-year plan.
Okay, so I'll word that in there, three and five-year. All right, let me, anything else?
Yes.
What about number 13?
You asked.
I did, go ahead.
Number 13.
Well, it was a date. Somebody suggested October 1st instead of November 1st on number 13.
Oh, to have the annual town report done by October 1st. To put a by date, have it done by date.
On, on which one?
13, number 13.
The Road Commissioner shall main, no, it's not 13. It's got to be 12.
Okay, I got 13.
Well, 13 is the inventory log. The one dated 4/22. So number 12 says the Road Commissioner shall participate. The Road Commissioner shall also support an annual report to be included in the town annual report no later than...
October 1st. That's what we usually do for all the other departments.
So September 1st? Well, no, I mean, we, this is one thing that we...
It really could be done by September 1st.
I mean, this is something that we have, as a group, we acknowledge needs to be done sooner. I mean, our fiscal year ends in June.
Yeah.
So July, August, September, there's no reason we're going to print in January.
September 1st is fine with me.
Okay, let's do September 1st.
It's just getting the, you know, it's just getting the, you know, and it's not just the road guys, it's all the departments.
Yes.
All right.
All right, so down on 21, Gavin had mentioned something about who, mentioning who is liable if, if any resulting damages happen, if the defects aren't corrected.
Is it the Commissioner or is it the town?
I'll have to look at that statute and let you know what it says, and it's going to depend on if the Commissioner is doing the work, is he subcontracted it out, but I need to look at those statutes before I can answer that.
Well, I think, I think what it is, is like, if there's a pothole and somebody's car gets damaged.
The town can be held liable for resulting damage.
That's what I took it as.
If they haven't, if they haven't acknowledged it anything within the 24-hour period.
That was one of the questions that I had for the board. Are we, am I having Burke and Clegg review these statutes to make sure they coincide with what it says?
I think they would be much quicker than me trying to figure that out and finding them.
Well, I mean, I think they're easy to find, but we're not the ones that would be interpreting the law.
And 20 and 22 were two that we needed to look into as far as, because in here it says that the Road Commissioners will install the culverts, which...
If they connect to a townway. Right? Once culverts are...
Where private driveways connect to a townway. I mean...
And that's not new, is it? That's something that, that's been done, if the culvert, I don't have it in my road, other road guys.
Davey got up and he spoke and said that, what did he?
Normally, when somebody's putting in a house, they, when they permit, they have to go with the Road Commissioner, meet with the Road Commissioner, see what size culvert they need beside the road. But once they do that, traditionally, when the culvert's needed repaired, replacement, the town has done that.
But they don't initially put a permit.
Not initially.
No, they just go and...
They just say what size that they need to be.
Right.
And this says that the, the property owner applies for, for the culvert. The municipality must install the culvert where private driveways connect to the townway. Once installed, the town must maintain them. Municipalities are responsible for permitting new highways. Again, because there's two statutes in there, you know, let's...
But we've never, as a town, we've never installed the culverts for private driveways.
Right, well, let's see what this law says.
Can we just look into it?
Never happened.
Nobody did that on Newbridge Road for, um...
The town didn't do it, no.
Oh.
They replaced them. Or if the town came and said, say like if my driveway didn't have a culvert and it never needed one, and all of a sudden the town comes in and changes a ditching or whatever, then all of a sudden you need a culvert there, then it would be on the town's responsibility to install it. But in exist, in existing driveway, if they wanted any changes, obviously the town has done it. But not initially.
Do you remember what 22?
And lastly, unless you guys got something that I didn't get, it was mentioned, what, what would, what would the Road Commissioner do in the case of a road failure as far as making, just making it passable or versus reconstruction? I'm not sure.
Which one was that under?
Tom Gore, he was adding, adding something that should be addressed.
Say it again?
Like if a road wa, completely washed out, and do you bring it up to standards of just being able to pass, you know, on gravel, or do you reconstruct everything? And I'm not sure how you can put that in an ordinance, I feel like that.
I think it's going to depend on the budget, the time of year, the, you know, 101 things. I'm not sure that, do you want to micromanage to that level of telling them how to maintain the road?
No.
The goal has to be to bring it back up to standards because if it's a town road...
Yeah, or bring it back up to the condition it was prior to the, prior to the damage.
But I think that if you, if you tie, tie them down to doing it a specific way, what if you don't have the money in the budget, or what if you don't, you know?
Right.
Did anybody interpret that comment last night differently? No? Okay.
I'll review the clip of the tape and I'll have the attorney review it as well. Some of these statutes, I'm sorry not to interrupt, like the one about the liability, that statute that I Googled is, that I searched is town immunity, municipals and immunity to lawsuits, so some of these may not be, we definitely need to look into those.
And I think that's it.
Number 22 though.
Yeah, do you remember what?
22, you know, "Registered professional engineer is required for any public works project exceeding the cost of $100,000 of the work created under risk to public safety or welfare." The question there was any, any jo, any job the public works is going to do is going to be over 100,000. Well, a paving project is easily over 100,000, but all it is is a resurface. You're not going to want to engineer, you don't, you don't need an engineer to go in and do that.
So do you want to add some clarity?
Some sort of rewording in, in that one.
So you want it on there, but just for, like...
Major projects, major, either whether, whether it's, I don't even think you can call it new construction or new roads, because I'm sure there are some road projects that you would need it on, but...
Is there anything that you can think of short of paving that might be exempt? I mean, it might be easier to just exempt paving.
Probably the best way to do it is to exempt. Exempt paving or exempt...
I mean, if we don't think there's anything else that's going to go over that amount that we would want an engineer for.
Right.
Possibly it'd be easier just to exempt.
Whether it's general road maintenance, whether it's, yeah. You have a thought?
Yep, Dave Langley, District on Road Commissioner. Yeah, I think we need to put an exemption in there.
Question is, is that the only one that we can think of?
Summer maintenance, I mean, I mean, granted culvert, but if you look at the budget number, you could use, I mean, we wouldn't hopefully go over 100,000, but I think mostly engineering thing would be our large culverts and, and bridges that would, would need something. And if we have that in there, where are we going to find the money to, for the engineering firm? I mean, we're talking thousands of dollars to put somebody on, on, on our payroll and where are we going to take it from?
We're not going to go in and replace a, a major culvert without engineering.
Yes, exactly. Which in this day and age...
Permit process is going to require that.
Yes, you know, through the DEP and there's other avenues that we could probably, you know, get it almost for nothing, or get a partial of it paid to a grant or something like that if we, we do our homework.
But you've got to agree, most reconstruct, or most retopping would be over 100,000 dollars.
So I mean...
The way this is worded, you'd have to have it engineered.
Maybe in, in special, maybe, like you said, we need to, we need to verify the line.
Yeah, put an exemption in there.
Let me pull that statue, I'm going to just work through one of those. Figure what they say. So if we can, actually, I'm not going to ask again, I'll wait. Next?
I think that's it.
Think that was it?
I think Elise got the lot, yep.
All right, so today's the 23rd, and on a good day, I can get you an answer by the 30th next week. How is Monday, Monday, May 13th for the public hearing? Or you could do Monday, the 6th if you think you're going to get many more changes, because I need to be able to start issuing absentee ballots by the 18th at the latest.
Why don't we do May, do you think?
Monday, May 6th.
The public hearing? Does that work for anybody?
It's a couple weeks, right?
I forgot to bring my calendar in.
Okay.
They should be fine.
Monday, it's open.
Usually available.
Yeah, I've got nothing down on it, so.
Okay. So we'll shoot for the 6th, if for some reason Elise has a conflict, it'll be the 13th. Either way, we'll start advertising.
On this, the section one effective date, we crossed it out last night, it should say secret valid. Not, um...
I can't hear you.
I said...
No, but they're talking and you're talking and I, that's...
Section one, the effective date, we crossed out all this, it should just be a secret valid, ballot, bleh, can't even talk.
Which one are you on?
The back.
The back of it.
Oh, the Road Commissioner, okay, I'm sorry.
Is we're going to be doing that one by secret valid too, not by, um...
Gotcha.
I think we got everything.
Just so you're aware, that's our scheduled meeting to meet with you guys on the final vote on the warrant.
You guys are meeting with the Board of Selectmen on the 29th. But the Warren and Finance has a meeting scheduled, another one scheduled.
The night, the night we vote on it was May 6th is what?
We're hoping you're going to start on the 29th.
Voting?
I, I just, I'm just saying, this is the schedule.
So how about we, um...
We could put ours off another week or something if you wanted to.
Because, how about Wednesday, May 8th?
Sure.
Might as well be out every night of the week.
Nope.
Nope, not good. So back to the 13th? Or Warren and Finance meets at, what, 6 o'clock?
Could we do it?
I think that if they have, they have all those articles and depending on where they get next week, I think you'd be too hard pressed to meet at 7:00 because I don't think they'll be done.
Okay.
So the 13th.
13th.
We're just going to have to really push the advertising on any concerns with it because we're not going to have, you're going to have to finalize it on the 14th because by law, absentees have to be out, so it's going to give you any wiggle room.
And what time did we say?
Uh, 7:00 for public hearings?
So 5:13, May 13th.
And that was all we had on those, correct? Okay, good. Next, we have Tattle Street.
So there are, so a group here from Tattle Street, I think they have a spokesman, Mr. Nguyen. They, I did tell them it'd be on tonight's agenda, however, in the meantime, the Road Committee also scheduled a meeting for Thursday, so I've sent this to you guys electronically. You've had a chance to review it, hopefully. He's here to speak if there's any questions. But the Road Committee did agree to put a meeting on for Thursday. They've got a grant that they're going to be talking about and they're going to review the application as well. So my understanding is they're hoping to make a decision. I'm looking for the chair, she's not here, the acting chair.
We're going to walk it tomorrow.
Oh, you're walking Tattle Street?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Um, and then the meeting is Thursday.
Right.
So if all goes well, you may have a recommendation for the Board of Selectmen the following Tuesday, depending on if the packet's completer and complete. Um, so has the board had a chance to look at it? He's here to answer any questions and go through it. Um, come on up, Ken, let's go through a couple of things while they're here. Do you have copies of it?
I don't have a copy.
But you got it?
I have it.
You got it, yeah.
So why don't you just tell them a little bit about what brought you to this point, how you, what you've done to qualify for the funds?
Oh, uh, Ken Nguyen, Tattle Street. Um, we've had the road graded, we've had it in York Great occasions, we've had it all, all the scrub brush or whatever you call it on the sides, that was all removed. We did this in the, um, and, um, had that done, and, um, Jeff Goodwin did the work, was really a real guy.
Road Commissioner in Chapeli.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, and then he's, uh, he's cleaned out the culverts and stuff at different times. We've gotten some leaves back in and all that stuff, not the culverts, but the, um, storm drains. Um, so we've put in for it to help us out, because we can use the room, the money to, uh, to definitely maintain our roads. It's, um, that's kind of the summary of it. Anything else?
So you are a, um, a road association by law?
Yes, we are, legitimate statutory road association, correct. That's all in the information there.
So as far as past practice and the process, uh, the road committee, like I said, they're meeting to make a recommendation, um, the board.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so we'd like to hear from the road committee first.
Right.
Yep, they're going to be the ones walking it and, um... But, yeah, as long as everything's in the packet, it seems like you have everything, the bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
Did the road committee, did anybody have a chance to look at the packet? Does it look like it's pretty complete or anything we want from them?
No, I think we're pretty, pretty well set.
You have your minutes?
Yeah, they have...
Yep. And the invoice, yeah. Everything's here. You looking for $2,000?
Excuse me?
How much are you looking for?
$3,000.
Three, three.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. The rest of it's on this page. Okay. Shouldn't be an issue, as long as...
Okay, all right, so we'll just wait to hear from you guys for possibly next Tuesday, then?
So I'm going to leave it on the, uh, I'll leave it on old business until, so it's just a matter of the road committee making a recommendation. I don't want to put any pressure on them. I don't know what, when, you know.
Okay.
If they walk through it tomorrow, I'm guessing somebody from Tattle Street's going to be involved, um, with the walkthrough, and then you're welcome to be at their meeting Thursday.
Uh-huh.
Maybe they'll put it on before they start talking grants, uh, and then come back next Tuesday, and we'll just keep moving it along until somebody makes a motion and a decision.
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, paving bids.
Um, so... We need to have, um, I need to get together with both road commissioners and have a chance since the last meeting. They've, um, kind of the input that we got at the public, at the Selectmen's meeting last week and speaking with the other one, they're kind of going in different directions. Um, so I'm hoping to schedule something where the three of us can sit down, um, before next Tuesday and, um, put together a bid so we can get it out. So it's pending.
Sounds good. Flicker license petition.
Uh, so my office has certified most of the signatures. Um, right now, we're in the process of typing them all into an Excel database, because we do have to sort them and make sure to pull out the duplicates, because unfortunately, there are people that have signed, uh, several different Circulators pages, so, uh, we are starting to pull those out, so I expect, um, I still expect them to have enough signatures, but I don't have anything official for you until next Tuesday.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, new business, rec fields.
Uh, the rec department, or a member of the rec department, uh, or actually, let me rephrase that, the, um, rec director called me today, and I know we met with, uh, Dave Langley, or talked to him a little bit about the parking lot, um, and about the, um, the ditching that was there. If you remember last year, we authorized the electrical work to get done and never got backfilled, because weather got, got the best of us. Um, he's looking for permission from the board to put up some temporary snow fencing until they can get it done, so that he's not having to put off, um, practices. I think that, um...
And my understanding is it's full, the ditch is full of water, so it's going to
The ditch is full of water.
get pumped out. They need to check the pipe to make sure that it hasn't been compromised with water in the pipe.
Right. And the, from what I understand, where it's located, I don't think it would be an insurance client, an insurance issue. Kids really shouldn't be back there.
That's correct, and that's why we're going to use that orange construction fence. Uh, I've got a roll of it. We're going to meet, if you guys are all set with it, we're going to meet Saturday morning.
Parents and the rec committee and the coaches to be diligent, because they shouldn't be back there, but...
Exactly, but it will cover us through MMA and our insurance.
Well, I'm not...
Well, to...
We're hoping.
We're hoping, so hopefully we can...
We're not asking them.
Okay, so, um, but yes, um, and Selectman Walters is right, the ditch, the ditch is full of water, and like you just said, with weather came in quick and everything there, and talking with Craig Norman, we're just going to check, make sure that, that pipe is, is, uh, doesn't have any water, and it shouldn't, but what needs to be done, and, um, hopefully Mother Nature will be happy with us. In a couple of weeks, things will dry up and we get that taken care of and, and stuff, so we're just waiting for Mother Nature and things to dry up a little bit there, so.
You're good with it moving forward, because no fencing, that should be enough.
Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll take some, some pictures before, afterwards, or whatever, and then we'll go from there, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Friday, April 26th.
So how's your mood? So my office would like to close at 2:30 on Friday, the 26th. Um, it's not often we do this, but, uh, we're doing a combined effort with Chapeli and the Short family, and, um, we know that, that John Short and his wife, Anne, live here, here in Acton. Uh, their son and his family of seven lost their house to a fire in Chapeli. Um, and with myself being a selectman, Sarah being a school board member, and Michelle being our treasurer, we kind of all need to be there for the bean supper that we're putting on, so we'd like to close 2:30. We haven't opened the last two Saturdays and every Thursday.
I have no problem.
So.
Don't either.
That's where we'll be.
Cause then we, because then we put the plug in that everybody from Acton that would normally come to a bean supper here should go to Chapeli. Does that bean supper?
Yes, it's a good cause, and, you know, they need our help, so.
Yeah.
Yep. We got called upon, and we're going to take the challenge.
Yep.
So, thank you.
I'd like to think Chapeli would do the same thing for us if, if it was the other way around, so.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I got no problem with that at all.
And it'll be just the, um, downstairs, will stay open as scheduled, or am I closing? Yeah, okay, so. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Welcome.
Okay, you're, I mean, you're fine with that, right?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. I'll just make that sure, you know? Okay.
We'll let you know when not.
Okay, good, yes. Okay, public comment. Anyone from the public have anything they'd like to say? Anyone at all?
At least saw me twice last night, stopped to get out, and I sat back down, and she did like she did this now. She kind of laughed a little bit.
Can we just have a rerun of last time?
Was saying thank you, or whatever it was.
I started the timer.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Did you subtract Ed's time when he was interrupting me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ed, Dennis.
Um, I would just like, again, uh, thank David Langley, uh, for stepping up to the plate when it comes to this rec. Uh, things got kind of pushed back last fall, and we still need to get the lights installed up there, those two poles, so there will be even more ditching, uh, done. Um, and for him to step up like he did this winter to maintain it, and I'd just like to thank him on, from the children of the town. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Anyone else?
Of course.
Here we go.
Of course.